We can't hear any audio.
Can you hear us now Pastor Lee?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So Kyle just presented 5424. Basically, it's a reaffirmation of the South Bend Police Department. This was the collective bargaining agreement that goes through 2025. So this is like a reaffirmation for their salaries. So do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead to open it up to the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the bill 5424?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the committee. What is the pleasure regarding the bill?
I move that we send Bill 54-24 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded to send Bill 5424 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torado, could you call the role please?
Yes. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Warner. Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you. That will be sent, 5424 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on then to the substitute bill 5524. I entertain a motion to accept the substitute bill.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do a roll call vote? Okay. Oh, I forgot about Pastor Lee. Yep. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you. We will accept the substitute bill. We do have a presenter?
Yes, Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor. Bill 55-24 sets the salaries and monetary benefits for the Teamsters Union members on successful negotiations. We agreed to a three-year agreement with the Teamsters Union, which allows for a 3% increases over the next three years, plus a one-time 6% market rate adjustment for 2025, which totals a 9% increase for members of the union in 2025. This agreement also includes $2,000 residency bonus for members of the union that reside within the city limits.
Okay, is that your presentation? Any other?
I'm sorry.
Four year?
Four year, four-year agreement, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, thank you so much for that presentation. I'll bring it back to the committee. Is there any questions from the committee? Anybody virtually? Pastor Lee, you have a question about that, the salary ordinance? Nope, okay. Then we're going to go ahead and open it up to... I'm sorry, what was that? No, okay. Well, I'm going to open it up for the public hearing portion then. Is there anyone here wish to speak in favor of substitute bill 5524?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against substitute bill 5524?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to close the public meeting portion of this, for this bill, and bring it back to the committee. Any statements from committee members? Councilmember White?
Okay, thank you Chair. I would like to say to the administration, the staff, and the Teamsters, a lot of work went into this, a lot of meetings, but the outcome was worth it. And I'm very, very pleased of the contract that will be, that we have before us, and that substitute Teamsters salary ordinances, and how everyone was able to work together to really have this positive outcome. And since I've been here for a period of time, I can say this is an excellent contract moving forward. Now, I wish we could have done more, but this is good too as well. So thank each and every one of you for all of your help and attention that you have given to the Teamsters at this particular time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I would just, Councilmember White is correct. This was a lot of hours, but they were good meetings. This was bargained in good faith, a lot of dialogue between both sides and a lot of hours. And I would like to, I see Eric Corvath is here. You and your team did a great job legal, everybody coming together, all of those entities. It was, it was something, and it was a lot, a lot. So good job to you and your team and all the other city representatives that helped through that process. So would anyone like to make a motion regarding substitute bill 5524?
I would like to make a motion that substitute bill 5524 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with favorable recommendation.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Torado, could you take the role please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you. Substitute bill 5524 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Okay, the next bill we have is Bill number 5624, and this is the mayor's salary ordinance.
Yes, Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. Mayor's salary ordinance allows for the 3% increase of the mayor's salary, which for 2024 is at $122,990 to $126,681 for 2025. So this is in line with non-bargaining salary increases.
So nothing ordinary out of this. It's the same that the rest of the non-bargaining employees for the city of South Bend will be receiving.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Committee members, do you have any questions or council members that are here? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up then for the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill 5624?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
I do not see anyone online or in person wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the committee. What's the...
I move that we send Bill 56-24 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Torado, could you call the role please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you so much. Bill 5624 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Okay, so we'll move on now to Bill number 5724, and that is the common council salary ordinance. And I believe President McBride will be presenting for us.
Good evening Chair, Council, and Committee. I would like to make a recommendation for the salary ordinance for the Southern Common Council with a 3% salary increase. It is in line with the rest of administration. And I am making that recommendation and hope that you would pass the same said resolution. And also just to note into the packet, just for transparency, over the years, we've had the positions in there for the part-time paralegal and administrative assistant, and we wanted to make sure that it was reflected in the budget as well. So there's no change. It's just what the council had approved for the previous years, and wanted to just make sure that it was reflected. With that, I'll open it up and see if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you so much President McBride for the presentation. I'll bring it back to the committee. Is there any questions from the committee members? Okay, I'm going to open it up then for the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill 5724?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Thank you. Is there anyone here or online wishing to speak against?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you so much. I'm going to close the public hearing on Bill 5724 and bring it back to the committee. Any discussion or entertain a motion regarding the bill?
I would like to make the motion that Bill 57-24 be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded to send Bill 5724 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torado, could you call the role please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you so much. Bill 5724 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Thank you so much President McBride. Okay, next up, we have Bill 5824, and this is the city clerk salary ordinance, and we have Clerk Torado to present.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Bianca Torado, City Clerk with offices on the fourth floor of this building. I am standing before you to present Bill number 5824, which is...
Excuse me, before we get started, I understand you'd like to hear 58 and 59 together?
Yes, thank you. That's accurate.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we hear Bill 5824 and 5924 together? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Torado, you're not here to take the role, so I will call the role.
I have my role shield here, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you. That motion has been granted, so if you'd like to proceed, we'll hear both of those bills together.
Yes, thank you. Next slide please. Oh, it's a clicker. Yes, okay, great. So I'm here presenting the Clerk's Office Salary Ordinance. We are just asking for the standard 3% here, 2024 with $80,212, and then the 2025 is with a standard 3%, it's $82,618. And happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for Clerk Torado?
Nope.
Okay. So then I'll go into Bill number 5924, which is the City Clerk Staff Non-Bargaining Salary Ordinance. Here before you, we have the four salary, four staff salary caps. There are no changes to those caps, but the standard 3%, and that is what we're asking for. And we also have, just for transparency, one public relations intern.
Okay, thank you so much. Committee members, is there any questions over either, well, over Bill 5924? Nope. Okay, thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and move to the public hearing portion. Do we have to do the public hearing portion separately for each bill then? Or can we do it, we have to do it?
No, you can have the public hearing together. You'd have to vote separately.
Okay. So we're going to open the public hearing for Bill 5824 and 5924. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the bills?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak against?
Do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on those two bills and bring it back to the committee. We'll need a motion on Bill 5824 first, or if there is any comments you would like to make before that vote.
Make a motion that Bill 58-24 be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it was seconded to send Bill 5824 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Torado, could you call the role please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you so much. 5824 will be sent to Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. And now we're going to go to Bill 5924. What's the pleasure of the committee regarding the bill?
I move... I second.
I'm sorry. I move it to be sent to the Committee of the Whole with favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Clerk Torado, could you take the role please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember, Committee Chair, I'm sorry, Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Five ayes.
Thank you so much. Bill 5924 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. And I would like to now entertain a motion to accept the second substitute bill 6024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been carried. So I see Mr. Willis is with us again to present the second substitute bill number 6024.
Yes, Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. Bill number 64-24 says salaries and wages and monetary benefits for all non-bargaining employees allows for a 3% increase for fiscal year 2025. Also, this ordinance includes the $2,000 residency bonus for all employees that reside within the city limits. With that, open up any questions.
Is this the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is this, this is the, a second or a third substitute? It is third substitute?
I think it's a third substitute.
Oh, it is the third substitute.
So Chair, we need to probably have to go back and accept the third now.
Yes, we do. My apologies.
No problem.
No, I knew it was a third one. I just didn't get the, I seen it online, but I didn't get the printout. Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to accept the third substitute bill 6024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Sorry about that.
Kyle Willis, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor. Bill number 60-24 sets salaries and wages and monetary benefits for all non-bargaining employees allows for a 3% increase for the fiscal year 2025. Also, it includes a $2,000 residency bonus for all employees that reside within the city limits.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you have anything further to add?
No.
No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the committee. Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Yeah, just a couple follow-up questions, and I should have asked this. The, in terms of the, we have new positions in green and then adding FTEs in blue. As we add FTEs, aren't those essentially new positions or?
No, so when you add an FTE, when you add an FTE, the position's already there. They're just adding an additional employee with that position title.
Okay, thank you. And then, second question. This kind of came to me in the past week, but... So noticing in certain, in some departments, we have the title nomenclatures with directors, you know, assistant directors, executive director, director, assistant directors, and then there are other departments where title nomenclatures are chief. What's the major difference?
Actually, the chief one I think is new. That's part of the VPA reorganization. I think that title has come into play there. I think in other departments, you see deputy director, you know, your normal director. So I think there's just been, just a change in title, and at least I know in VPA, I can't speak to the rest of the departments, but in VPA, that's where I've seen the new chief title come in.
So the only department I've noticed at prior is in... So the only department I've noticed at prior is in IT, where we have Chief Innovation Officer, Chief, you know, Information Officer, and then... But then VPA has adopted that titling. You know, doesn't affect anything here. If there's no difference in... If it truly is just nomenclature, but maybe a conversation to be had. Moving forward, thank you.
Oh, just, now that you say that, in my last position, I had two titles. I had an Assistant Director, Chief Compliance Officer, kind of like combined title. So I definitely, I know it definitely can be confusing, but trying to have a... No, I can't remember, can't recall the word, but like just a set template of titles across the departments, yeah, but we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember White?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Fine. And just for clarification to the, everything that's in gray, those, even though it may show like what the salary was, those positions are all being eliminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, no other questions over the Salary Ordinance? Us on the third substitute bill 6024? Then I'm going to go ahead and move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the bill? And Clerk Toronto, Councilmember Warner has joined us. If you could make note for that, please. Councilmember Warner, thank you.
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the committee. Is there any statements or final questions regarding this bill? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion regarding the bill.
I move that we send third substitute bill 60-24 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to send the third substitute bill 6022 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto could, yes?
24, 6024.
6024, I'm sorry, to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. Could you call the role, please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Warner. Committee Chair Naskowski.
Aye.
Citizen Member Ross Dill. Six ayes.
Thank you. That bill will be sent to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation. At this time, I believe there's no other business become before the committee. The next meeting is at 4:35 with Community Investment. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
I'm down there.
You saw him in the back. He should die. How do you feel then? Take me so far. Yeah. I didn't look at that much. Fix them. Or I know. I use. That we had just. I usually about that. Just started doing it on you know. You know, list of plans like that. No, you gotta use the terms. Cause you find more. Yeah, that's what she got, so. Oh, she's back. Ash.
Four thirty-five, we'll call the committee investment committee to order. I will take a roll call. Vice Chair, Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
And Citizen Member Gray. And I think we've got Citizen Member Kanajewski, it looks like, online.
Present.
And with that, so, Mr. Gladish, welcome. And we will start with Bill twenty-four thirty-one confirming resolution for six nineteen Sherman Avenue. I will just note for everybody, the petitioner was not able to attend Property Brothers LLC. They were before us two weeks ago, both the committee and the whole council, the whole. But they could try to be here for seven o'clock, so.
Yeah, Jordan will be here at seven. His flight was delayed, he sends his apologies, and then his business partner, Tony, who was here at the meeting in September, had something come up and was unable to attend, but they both were going to try to join online if they could, so I will just.
I try to be flexible, given that every tax abatement comes, basically comes to us two meetings in a row, two weeks apart, so.
Jordan did confirm that he would be at the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, the confirming resolution, excuse me, Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity Offices on the fourteenth floor. The confirming resolution is for a multifamily residential tax abatement for Property Bros. LLC. This is for property that Property Bros. LLC owns at the corner of Lincoln Way and Sherman. With this tax abatement, this would enable Jordan to build four duplexes. The total investment for this particular phase of his project is over one point four million dollars. You might recall that last year, council approved a vacant building abatement and another multifamily residential tax abatement for Property Bros. LLC for two renovations and a duplex in this area. The new duplex is on Sherman, so it'd be part of the same development. Just the numbers really quick for your review. The current lots are vacant lots, they only bring in about six hundred and forty-six dollars a year in taxes. Once Jordan's project is complete, we anticipate that the tax liability total for those parcels will be about fifteen thousand dollars. Over the lifetime of the eight-year abatement, Jordan would be, and Property Bros. LLC would be abated just over a hundred thousand dollars. And they would be paying close to sixteen thousand dollars, which is significantly higher than what those parcels would bring as vacant lots. This is just a table that shows the overall numbers, broken down for an extended period of time. I'll note that even with the tax abatement, after fifteen years, this property would be anticipated, these four properties would be anticipated to bring in about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over fifteen years. So that's with the abatement. If they were to continue as is, it would be less than ten thousand, so I'll pause there and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, committee members, any questions? Councilmembers, any questions? With that, we'll open up a public hearing, and members of the public wishing to speak on Bill twenty-four thirty-one.
I do not see anyone from the public or in person wishing to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the committee, can I have a motion at this time?
Move to send Bill twenty-four thirty-one to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Excuse me, it would go to the full council.
Oh, full council, thank you.
Forward with a favorable, I have a motion in a second to send the bill forward with a favorable.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Committee Chair Warner.
Aye.
Citizen Member Thomas Wright. Citizen Member Kane Kanjewski.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you, so twenty-four thirty-one, go forward with favorable recommendation now, twenty-four thirty-two, Mr. Lovich.
Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity Offices on the fourteenth floor. Very exciting presentation for you for a ten-year mixed-use development real property tax abatement for property at three two one West Wayne. This is property that you can see basically from when you walk south out of the building, it'll be to your right. It's across the street north of the Gates Lot. This used to be called the Spener Garage back in the nineteen twenties when it was built. This is currently the inside of the building, it's been vacant for a very long time. The owner is an LLC called Historic Hearthstone, of which Regina Emberton is the primary owner of the property. She purchased the building and plans to rehabilitate it, it's about seventeen thousand square feet. And her objective is to put in a restaurant with family-oriented entertainment, that would be the anchor tenant. I'll let Regina talk about some of her plans in a little bit more detail. But in addition to a restaurant space, she would also be leasing space to Indiana Landmarks and South Bend Trade Works for both offices and working spaces. Total investment of both the rehabilitation and a build-out of the restaurant would be about two and a half million dollars. The employment impact, Indiana Landmarks has three employees who would move and work out of the space, and the restaurant would anticipate about twenty new full-time employees. I mentioned it's a ten-year tax abatement, and this is a project that the city through tax abatement is also, if you were to approve a tax abatement, we are also supporting this project's ready application. So, Mrs. Emberton had received a letter of support from the city, you know, as she was submitting her application there. You can see the tax estimates there, currently the building only brings in about forty-six hundred dollars. Our estimates after the building's completion, the rehabilitation's completion would be about fifty-five thousand dollars. I can pause there, and Regina, if you want to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the project.
Hi, everybody, council members and committee members, my name's Regina Emberton. I live just down the street, actually, at six fifteen West Colfax. And I purchased this building in February of this year from Herman and Getz. It was built back in nineteen twenty-six, it's been used for automotive purposes over a majority of its history, first for a service garage, then later as a auto sales lot, and then finally as a van conversion center. In about nineteen ninety-four, the Herman and Getz family or company purchased this property along with many others in that immediate area, and it's been used for storage and warehouse, and as Mr. Lovich mentioned, has been empty and underutilized for many, many years, very deteriorated in terms of the condition of the building and the investment that's needed to rehabilitate it. We started working with Indiana Landmarks, Todd Zeiger from Indiana Landmarks, looking at this building and just what a gem it could be as part of the downtown revitalization, so we're really excited to be working with him. They've signed a lease for a small office that would be their northern Indiana headquarters for Indiana Landmarks, with a little bit of frontage in the building here. The other tenant, South Bend Trade Works, is utilizing the lower level of the building, a really unique nonprofit organization that basically restores and recovers old construction materials and building materials and repurposes those, and also does training for the trades, for people to learn how to use those products when they're rehabilitating historic neighborhoods, so a really good fit for that lower level to warehouse their products down there. The first floor, the majority of that, a little bit around ten thousand square feet, would be used by a local startup that is called Ivy Alley Brew House, and they are developing their concept to lease that space, and as Eric was mentioning, to put in a brewery, a pizza kitchen, and some entertainment. So I'm really excited, one of the concepts that they're working on is duck pin bowling, and that's something we don't have in this area currently, I think the closest ones are in Indianapolis and Grand Rapids. Maybe Kalamazoo is working on constructing one, but this is essentially a little bit of a lighter bowling ball, a shorter alley, makes it a little bit more convenient for enthusiasts and also families and people who are maybe just out to have some fun. So a great communal space is how we envision that to be going. We're moving through the process and we would hope to begin construction, you know, upon approval of some of this, the abatement and hopefully the ready grants, and be operating sometime in the summer, early summer is when the brew house would like to be up and running, so I'm optimistic about the construction timeline, but, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, committee members, questions?
Yes, I have a question. I guess this would be more for Eric than probably you.
you. I, I would like to know why we would do ten years on this. Can you explain for me, please?
So, uh, as part of the ready application process, there's a local match for, um, the application. So as Historic Hearthstone was, um, figuring out how much they were going to be requiring from the state through a ready program, the city has to do a match. So, um, the, I guess, lowest risk for the city is to commit to a longer-term tax abatement, more aggressive tax abatement, to get that city matchup. So the state takes into consideration what our tax estimate, tax abatement estimates are. In this case, the tax abatement estimate was about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the ten-year period. So that was what the state would consider to be, um, part of the local public match.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Emberton. Is, um, so, uh, you've submitted an application for ready, um, and hope that that would be successful, but is, um, is the project still feasible, um, to move forward without that, or what's the default plan?
Yes, the, the project will definitely move forward, um, even without that. The concept may, may scale a little bit. Um, the, the ready grant would aid in ensuring that the tenant has as much support as possible and able to do a, you know, first-class, um, build-out of the space. But, um, definitely, we plan to proceed either way.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, council members, any questions? Councilmember Lee?
What type of restaurant is that, is it gonna be?
So I, I wouldn't personally be operating the business, um, and so I don't want to speak too much for them. But in the business plan that they've worked up so far, there's a, a pizza kitchen, so they'd be having, um, pizza, and then they had a lot of other menu items. Um, it, you know, hamburger, or not hamburgers, but sandwiches, um, just general things like that. So I think the pizza kitchen was the main, um, concept that they felt, they felt would be additive and unique in the area.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll go to the public. Any members of the public, either, uh, in person or online, wishing to, uh, speak on Bill twenty-four thirty-two?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor or in opposition.
Seeing nobody, we'll bring it back to the committee. Any comments or motion?
Um, just, I move that we send Bill twenty-four thirty-two to the full council with favorable recommendation.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Clerk Torado?
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Boden Simpson?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Committee Chair Warner? Citizen Member Thomas Gray?
Aye.
Citizen Member Kane Kajewski?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. And the bill go forward, uh, this evening with a favorable recommendation. We'll see you at seven. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Gladys, our final bill, twenty-four thirty-three.
Thank you, council members. Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity Offices on the fourteenth floor. Before you is a declaratory resolution that would provide, pending approval, a nine-year tax abatement for a rehabilitation project at the Doubletree Hotel off of Dr. Martin Luther King, King Junior Boulevard. Um, you can see the image of the hotel there. Um, the owner, AFP one-one-one Corp., um, is, you know, would like to take on this nine-point-two-million-dollar rehabilitation of the hotel. Um, since twenty-seventeen, they've invested four-point-four million dollars, uh, to get to this point where they're ready to launch this, you know, full-scale, uh, renovation project. Um, other planned improvements, you know, in addition to the rooms, the lobby is, you know, uh, the utilities, you know, really making sure that this property in downtown South Bend continues to be kind of a, an attraction, places, a place where people want to stay when they come visit. Um, currently, the hotel, um, employs about a hundred and ten full-time employees. Uh, they would retain those employees and estimate that, you know, within a few years after completion of the project, that they would have five new employees. Um, you know, it is a rehab, it is a currently functioning hotel. Um, I just want to click through here. I, I included these in the packet, but I just wanted to show you some of the renderings that they had provided in terms of, you know, this would be the lobby area. And the, um, the guest rooms and the layouts for the suite. Um, I guess, and then I, I think I had the, uh, restaurant on there, but if I don't, I'll put it in before the seven o'clock meeting. Um, here's the tax numbers for this abatement. I'd like to point out that for this nine-year abatement, um, you, you might notice that the, uh, abated tax is a little bit lower than what we're used to seeing. This is because it's, it is a fully active space. This isn't, um, a vacant building like three-two-one West Wayne, uh, that, you know, will be rehabbed. So, um, you know, we've provided these tax estimates over nine years for your consideration. Um, even, you know, you know, I like, I like to look out ahead and look after fifteen or twenty years. Um, after fifteen years, you know, through this project, you know, this property would still be bringing in two million dollars more in property taxes, uh, over fifteen years than it would have if they don't take on this project. I think we, you know, understand that, you know, you know, the investment is important to make sure that people want to stay there well into the future. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know Michael Hinks, um, is online. Uh, Michael is the, um, the chief operating officer of the ownership group, and, uh, Michael, I don't know if you want to say anything, or if you have, um, want to provide an overview of what your plans are?
Yeah, I want to, first of all, thank the council for, uh, considering this. You know, we feel that we're an important landmark within the community, and we want to be part of the, you know, development program as you guys move forward. We're willing and our owner is very committed to revamping the hotel. It, uh, has seen, you know, I think it's at a point where it needs a renovation, and, uh, we currently play host to Notre Dame football on the home games. We also, throughout the year, host a lot of the away teams for the other sporting events at Notre Dame, as well as a lot of community events and businesses in the area. So I think, you know, with us committing to this, it would be a great addition and really re-establishing this hotel within the community.
All right, thank you. Uh, committee members, any questions?
To the, uh, city in the past, that any support, any additional support to this particular hotel, courses, and persons?
To my knowledge, this is the first time that, you know, the city has supported this. There wasn't any tax abatements through our search, um, that were provided. Um, I don't know. I can, I can do a little bit of research before the seven o'clock meeting to see if, you know, there were other cases. I did, I did a quick review of Laserfish, uh, but I can do another one, just to make sure.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, any, uh, council members?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Kane.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, um, the description says most of these improvements of the nine-point-two are mechanical electrical sprinkler pipes and then, uh, remodeling of, uh, event spaces and whatnot. I'm just curious, on the application, most of these are listed, most of these improvements are listed under new machinery and equipment as opposed to existing building improvements?
So.
Is there a reason, or does that affect, uh, any of this at all?
No, uh, you know, they'll be rehabbing all the rooms, so I think we just, we wanted to make sure that, at least in that grid, we were, as we were advising them through the petition process, that we're accounting for different things appropriately. Uh, determining our estimates on this particular project, um, weren't as simple as just taking, you know, sixty percent of the costs and applying that as new additional AV. Uh, you know, we kind of looked at, uh, different hotels in the area downtown, tried to figure out what would be the best way to calculate what an estimated new assessed value would be. So in this particular case, um, I think we ultimately decided that there was kind of a good s- square footage comparison or per-room comparison, which helped us decide that, you know, this nine-point-two-million-dollar project would likely add, in our estimation, about four million dollars in assessed value. So a little bit of a unique process for us that we hadn't done with our, with most properties and most tax abatements.
Sure, thank you.
Hey, council members, any questions? Mr. Lee?
Yes. Mr. Gladys, how soon would this project get started after the process is, is done?
I'll let Michael provide a little bit more details on their timeline, but I know that they're, they're ready to go. I think shortly after the new year begins. I think Q-one was really their plan to get going. I don't know, Michael, if that's.
Yeah, I can add on to that. Our, our goal is to have everything completed prior to the fall season for Notre Dame football next year. Uh, we do have them under contract one more year, and we're hopeful that that contract will renew for an additional term after that. But our goal is to have everything done, probably July, mid-August at the latest. Uh, but the target is the end of July and starting probably the second week in February.
Thank you. With that, I'll, uh, we'll go to the public. Any members of the public online or in person wishing to speak on Bill twenty-four thirty-three?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of the bill.
Thank you. Bring it back to the committee. Just say, uh, you know, it wasn't too long ago, there was, uh, some concerns about whether there would be a hotel in that building, and, uh, uh, you know, Barnes and Thornburg left the building, and so, uh, we're, we're thankful for your investment and, uh, continue to work with the community. And I will make the motion to, uh, send the bill forward to the full committee, full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to send forward favorable. Clerk Torado?
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Boden Simpson?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Committee Chair Warner?
Aye.
Citizen Member Thomas Gray? Citizen Member Kane Kajewski?
Aye.
All ayes.
At the bill, we'll go forward with favorable recommendation, and, uh, the Community Investment Committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
That's right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have our clerk to please take the roll.
Councilmember Niskowski. Aye. Councilmember White. Aye. Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Present.
Citizen Member Stacy Odom.
Stacy will not be here. She sent me a note. She said had an emergency.
Okay, five present.
Thank you. Okay. We will now, um, need a vote, I believe, for a substitute bill. Um, thirty-eight twenty-four to hear a substitute thirty-eight twenty-four.
A motion to accept the substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor say, well, okay, we need to take a roll. Call.
Counselmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Counselmember White.
Aye.
Counselmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Present.
Citizen Member Stacy Odom.
Stacy will not be here. She sent me a note. She said had an emergency.
Okay, five present.
Thank you. Okay. We will now, um, need a vote, I believe, for a substitute bill. Um, thirty-eight twenty-four to hear a substitute thirty-eight twenty-four.
A motion to accept the substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor say, well, okay, we need to take a roll. Call.
Counselmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Counselmember White.
Aye.
Counselmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Present.
Citizen Member Stacy Odom.
Stacy will not be here. She sent me a note. She said had an emergency.
Okay, five present.
Thank you. Okay. We will now, um, need a vote, I believe, for a substitute bill. Um, thirty-eight twenty-four to hear a substitute thirty-eight twenty-four.
A motion to accept the substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor say, well, okay, we need to take a roll. Call.
Counselmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Counselmember White.
Aye.
Counselmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Aye.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Five ayes.
At the bill, we'll go forward with favorable recommendation and, uh, the community investment committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
I'd like to have the zoning annexation meeting to come to order and like for our city clerk, if you take our role, please.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
I'm present.
Councilmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Present.
Citizen Member Stacy Odom.
Stacy will not be here. She sent me a note. She said had an emergency.
Okay, five present.
Thank you. Okay. We will now, um, need a vote, I believe, for a substitute bill. Um, thirty-eight twenty-four to hear a substitute thirty-eight twenty-four.
A motion to accept the substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor say, well, okay, we need to take a roll. Call. Go ahead.
Counselmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Counselmember White.
Aye.
Counselmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Aye.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
Or I think I'm Sherry Bowden. You know? Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. Aye.
Bye-byes.
No problem. We now move forward to hearing, um, substitute. We have representative. Please, she's on the other, maybe she's off the coat. Sorry.
Good afternoon. Carrie Myers with the Department of Community Investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. I'm here on behalf of the petition submitted by Louis Castillo and Fabiola Garcia for six twenty-three Olive Street requesting a special exception for restaurant use in UF Urban Flex District. Uh, you might recall this item from last month when they were here requesting a special exception for retail use. But after further discussion with petitioner, it became more apparent that the use would be less retail and more of a restaurant type use with serving shakes, smoothies and teas. The proposed use is still consistent with the city plan, objective LU two point two, to pursue a mix of uh, land uses along major corridors and other locations identified in the future land use map. The parcel front's a small commercial node that serves a community in a traditional neighborhood development pattern. The Board of Zoning Appeals has forwarded a favorable recommendation to the council for the amended request for restaurant use. And the petitioner is here.
I'm lucky here for our petitioner. Please come forth and share your thoughts. Ask by here all the time. Please state your name and then show your thoughts.
Hey, hi. My name is Fabiola Garcia and my address is six twenty-three South Ole Street in South Bend, Indiana.
Okay. Thank you. And please tell us what you plan to do.
Uh, so smoothies. Smoothies, the, the, the. Uh, teas, uh, cold and hot. Um. Uh, waffles, crepes. And so, so only that.
It got you. Alrighty, understood. Right, well, thank, any questions from representative or, or, yeah, you got it? Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, can you get them to, can you get her to repeat what she said the restaurant is gonna consist of?
Oh, eh, what can I, a moment. Uh, more than that, it's more like a cafe. Coffee shop. Coffee shop. If we have in there, every bit of free and every bit of. Cold drinks, hot drinks, hot teas, cold, uh, teas. Herbal life. Yeah, herbal life, right? It's smoothies.
Hmm, thank you.
Crepes and waffles.
Yes, okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I went to the BZA, uh, hearing that they had for the rezoning and it's healthy drinks that they had that they wanted to be able to serve in this, uh, specific neighborhood, which is right down the street from San Adalbert. Um, with a, um, a lifestyle of healthy food to the community. Limited hours, so it wouldn't be a twenty-four hour restaurant. I believe she had limited hours on there as well. I think it would be a good development for the area and I had a chance to talk with her after the BZA meeting.
Cool. Good to hear that. Used to get my nails done in that building. Hmm, so glad to see it being repurposed. Cool. Alrighty. Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
Looking at the analysis and the recommendation, this building, uh, has, was designed and has historically been utilized as a corner retail service. So I think that this would be good use because, um, at one time, uh, we had a pizza coming out of place, you know, on, because it's two sides to it. And so my only question, are they planning on using the entire building?
Are you planning on using the entire building?
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, now, um, if there are no further questions, we'll go for a public hearing. Um, those like to speak in favor online or in person, please share your thoughts, come forth and share your thoughts.
I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak. I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Okay, anyone wanting to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone online or in person wishing to speak in opposition.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We close the public hearing and we come back to our committee. What was your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to send substitute bill thirty-eight twenty-four to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
I second that.
Okay, um, clerk Toronto, please take a turn.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Aye.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. We need a, an, uh, bill forty-two twenty-four has been tabled. We need a vote to table it. Pardon me, we need a vote to table it. They've. You need a motion. Motion, it was motion to, they requested to be tabled.
It's a request by the petitioner.
Yes. Um, you wanna clarify that? Um, Skip.
Skip Morrell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Um, as you mentioned last time, we kind of felt that it would be important to come to a clear agreement before the meeting as opposed to kind of hashing it out or talking through details during the meeting. So we're just looking to table it to the next meeting so we have more of an opportunity to speak with the petitioner and understand, uh, the plan moving forward. This is for the one that was opening the porch for that triplex, right?
Okay. We have a, need a motion?
You know what date that would be?
It would be the October twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth.
It's two weeks into that.
I'll make the motion that bill forty-two dash twenty-four be table until our next meeting, which is October the twenty-eighth, based on, uh, request from petitioner.
That's right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have our clerk to please take the roll.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Aye.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay, thank you. We, we now have, um, time for us to hear bill number fifty-two twenty-four, special exception at eight one two LaSalle Avenue. We turned it back over to Ms. Myers.
Good afternoon. Again, Carrie Myers, Department of Community Investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. This next item is a petition submitted by Carrie Kramer for eight twelve East LaSalle Avenue requesting a special exception for restaurant use in UF Urban Flex. The petitioner is requesting to use a commercial building as a small-scale restaurant. It's located along LaSalle Avenue in close proximity to the South Bend Clinic to the east and Saint Joe Hosp-, uh, Saint Joe High School football field across the street and NC Neighborhood and DT just to the west a few blocks. The small-scale restaurant is consistent with the traditional surrounding neighborhood and its development pattern will serve to enhance the area. The building was designed and historically been utilized as retail and service space. Introducing a restaurant will activate the building and enhance the neighborhood by offering a new local amenity. The proposed use is consistent with the city plan two thousand and six, objective LU two point two, pursue a mix of land uses along major corridors and other locations identified in the future land use map. While not located within the Northeast Neighborhood Plan boundaries, the proposed restaurant use is immediately adjacent to and is. boundaries, the proposed restaurant use is immediately adjacent to and is compatible with the plan. The Board of Zoning Appeals has forwarded a favorable recommendation to the request and the petitioner is here.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to hear from the petitioner. Please come forth and share your name and address and give us your thoughts regarding your plans.
My name is Mark Kramer. I'm representing my wife, Carrie. My address is seven one 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 five Grafalken Court in Niles, Michigan. I've owned this building for at least forty years. I used it personally for office space for my pest control business and office space for my property business. There is an apartment upstairs. Our intention is to lease the property for restaurant use to lower the ground floor area of the property. And ultimately, we'll sell the building to the petitioner, to the restaurant owner. It's a great area. I think it fits in with the area with the school across the street. There's really no other restaurant nearby. There is down on Niles Avenue, I think is the closest restaurant. So I think it would fit with the neighborhood and I'm in favor of it. Hopefully you are.
Alrighty, any questions for their presenter? Or the petitioner? Righty, I see no questions.
Thank you.
Cool. I think the closest one's probably the yellow cap. I just had breakfast there. Alrighty, we will now have a public hearing. Those who speak in favor, please share your thoughts by coming to the mic or speaking online.
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Those who are in opposition, please do likewise.
I do not see anyone in public or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, we will then close our public hearing and then hear from our committee. A recommendation?
I'll make a motion to send bill fifty-two twenty-four to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation. I think this is a great use of land and especially for the area.
I second that motion.
Alrighty, we'd like for our clerk to please take the role.
Councilmember Nyskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Chair Good Rogers.
Aye.
Citizen Member Jordan Geiger.
Aye.
Committee Chair Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
I thank you. And we thought to close the zoning and acquisition committee. Thank you for being here.